Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, Downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, everyone. If you'll please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And our prayer this morning comes from Ephesians. Do not use harmful words, but only helpful words, the kind that build up and provide what is needed, so that what you say will do good to those who hear you. And our dog this morning is Commissioner Kokoski.
Hi. Come on, we're gonna go for just a little walk. Come on, baby. Come on. Come here. Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
We have a cute little girl here. She's about a year old. She's a mix, kinda like a blue-merle color, really different looking. She was found in Illyria Township and she will be available for adoption tomorrow. This is the smallest dog we have right now in the kennel. She's really playful. She's sweet eyes petting her before the meeting and she's really a good girl. So if you're interested, you can come down to the dog kennel or check us out on Facebook. We have all of our dogs listed there. Somebody here's gotta come get her tomorrow, so thank you. Come on. Oh, and we have 21 dogs, correct?
Madam Clerk?
We have an appointment unless you guys would like to do that first.
Yes, we're gonna start with, we have an appointment here with Mobility and Opportunity for a Vibrant Economy, the group known as MOVE. Bill Harper is the Chair and Brian Frederick. So gentlemen, we'll start with you folks.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Lundey, Commissioner Kokoski, and Commissioner Kaloe for giving us this opportunity and for welcoming us this morning. As you mentioned, I'm Bill Harper, Executive Director of United Way of Greater Lorraine County, and glad to be and humbled to be the Chair of the Executive Committee of Mobility and Opportunity for a Vibrant Economy, otherwise known as MOVE. The lack of transportation options in Lorraine County affects every sector of our community. Here are just a few of the many stories that illustrate our current state of affairs. This is from an individual who grew up in Oberlin when there was more public transportation available. "After graduating high school, I attended Lorraine County Community College while living at home. We only had one car in the family and my mom needed it to get to work each morning. I was fortunate to have the LCT available and I caught it every morning in Oberlin and rode it to the campus and home again later that day. It's not a stretch to say that the availability of reliable public transportation changed my life for the better and created opportunities for me to reach my potential, as it's likely that I wouldn't be a college graduate without that route being in existence. I often think about the people who are out there now, who come from similar situations as me, but will never have the same opportunity to succeed simply because the route has been discontinued." Another person who deals with health issues, living in Amherst. "Do you understand how asking for a ride affects the self-esteem of a person who is unable to drive because of health issues? Providing bus service for people who don't have any other way to get around should be a given, not a gift." And finally, from a local employer. "If my workers could depend on a reasonably capable public transportation system, many could move from part-time to full-time and support their families." Lorraine County must prioritize public transportation. A robust transit network is about more than simply moving people from point to point. Public transportation is a pocketbook, as well as an economic issue. While similar neighboring counties like Lake County and Stark County invest more than $50 per resident into their transit systems, Lorraine County currently invests only $3.37 of local support per person. These other Ohio counties are able to make these sustainable investments with voter support for a dedicated sales tax of a quarter percent or more. Lorraine County's local contribution is from the General Revenue Fund and thus must compete with every other expenditure. We have an opportunity to invest more into a transit system that has a financial payback. In fact, research shows that expanding transit will improve our economy, create jobs, yield business sales, and increase home values. A strong system of transportation options is critical to a strong, healthy community, and a public transit is the backbone of such a system. A strong transportation system gets people to good-paying jobs and employees dependably to businesses, thus strengthening our local economy. A strong public transportation system gets people to quality education and training so that they can become a part of our local workforce. And a strong transportation system gets people to services and healthcare, which improves the overall wellness of our community. In fact, the lack of public transportation costs us, it's expensive, forcing people to spend on transportation workarounds, but more importantly, forcing people to go without. An elderly resident of South Lorraine recently lamented to Victor Leandry, President of El Centro, how a trip to Flickner's grocery store in downtown Lorraine is an all-day journey currently, using our current transit system, despite the fact that Flickner's is only three miles away from her home. But she has few other options because she doesn't drive and she lives in a food desert with limited shopping options. Victor and members of the El Centro Board experienced her plight firsthand by taking the journey themselves, as documented in a recent newspaper article. While great, the need isn't certainly just in our urban centers. Businesses throughout Lorraine County find the lack of reliable transportation a common factor in workforce dependability. We know many people cannot get a decent paying job because they don't make the $15 an hour necessary to own and maintain a car and simply can't get to where the jobs are. Fixed transit routes spark economic development along the lines by connecting businesses with employees and customers, and the reach can then be expanded with creative solutions such as van pooling, Uber, Lyft, bicycling, and so forth. Because the need is so great and so pervasive, we've organized an advocacy organization, Mobility and Opportunity for a Vibrant Economy, or MOVE. To explain further, I'll ask our Vice Chair, Brian Frederick, President and CEO of the Community Foundation of Lorraine County, to continue this presentation. Brian?
Thank you, Bill, and thank you, Commissioners. This grassroots organization was formed to better understand transportation needs in our communities and to advocate for a system of options that can effectively meet those needs today and into the future. MOVE is currently working to allow Lorraine County residents the option to vote for a dedicated sales tax in November, but we intend MOVE to be ongoing and to support transportation options in Lorraine County into the future. We've incorporated and are in the process of filing a 501(c)(4) application with the IRS. MOVE's leadership demonstrates widespread concern that Bill talked about for transportation needs with representation from many Lorraine County anchor institutions, such as the United Way, the Community Foundation, Chamber of Commerce, Team Lorraine County, Oberlin Project, El Centro, Urban League, Lorraine County Community College, Mercy, and University EMC, Hospital Systems, a retired county commissioner, and many concerned citizens. MOVE's vision for a county transportation system is one that is capable of significantly meeting the transportation needs of Lorraine County residents both locally and regionally. It needs to be of sufficient size and scale to adequately connect people to employment, education, and healthcare, so that it is an investment, not an expense. MOVE's vision is for a county transportation system that is sustainably funded, so that the system becomes the backbone of economic growth and opportunity in Lorraine County. Similar to 911, transportation needs a dedicated funding source, so that it doesn't fall victim to either or decisions that you guys have to make all the time. Arguably, it's during these periods of economic downturn that the county needs transportation the most. MOVE's vision is for a county transportation system that is smart in its design and operation to get the best possible system for the dollars we have available. If voters approve this investment, we need to design the system using best practices and a vision for the future. We need to leverage every available local dollar with other resources such as federal dollars to get the biggest bang for our buck. And finally, MOVE's vision is for a county transportation system that is accountable to the public to ensure real value and earn continued public support. Momentum for these principles is growing rapidly. We've received over 260, Sharon, you got them in a book, I think, 260 written organizational and individual endorsements to date and constant verbal encouragements, not to mention the number of folks that have come in the room today because they care about public transit. And this is without any real effort. We are organized to pass the transit sales taxes November on the ballot, but we need your help. We know that the lack of transportation is preventing our friends and neighbors from getting education, better jobs, and essential services. We know that public transit, if planned well, can be an investment in our county's economic future. This November's election is critical for our communities and the growth of the county. A robust transit system that provides mobility and increases quality of life in Lorraine County will take a significant community investment. We know that. The 2016 general election is a huge opportunity for the county commissioners and citizen activists to advocate for an expanded transit system. Our research tells us that Lorraine County voters will support a dedicated sales tax for public transportation because of the importance to so many and its impact on the local economy. Our research tells us that a dedicated quarter percent sales tax will support a reasonably expanded transit system. As a result, we're asking the Board of Commissioners to open the door to this opportunity by placing a quarter percent sales tax dedicated to public transit before the voters of Lorraine County this November. We ask you to allow Lorraine County voters to decide whether they want to invest in this kind of public system. This dedicated tax will simply put Lorraine County at a level of investment similar to many other counties in Northeast Ohio and their support for transit over the years. With the lowest sales tax in Ohio's 88 counties, Lorraine County is falling behind in investing in an infrastructure needed in a 21st century economy. Lorraine County will move forward when its residents can move around. Thank you, and we're happy to answer any questions you might have. And we've got other members of our Executive Committee in membership here, too.
I've had the chance to attend many of your meetings and public forums that you've held, and, you know, and I just can't thank so many of the faces I see in this room have been involved with the initiative from the very beginning and all that you've been doing to bring this to light. I just had a couple very brief questions. I guess you come here presenting the idea of a dedicated sales tax. Was there a consideration given to a property tax, yes or no, and why?
Yep. You wanna talk? Commissioner Lundey, as we've looked at the funding of public transportation throughout the country and certainly here in Ohio, we recognize that the sales tax is the preferred way of funding. Cuyahoga County, for the Greater Cleveland RTA, 1% sales tax. 1% sales tax in Stark County, 1% sales tax, I'm sorry, quarter percent in Stark County, quarter percent in Lake County. We see that as the standard. We know from our research that that is the preferred method of funding public transportation in Lorraine County, as opposed to a property tax. So we believe that that is preferred and, quite frankly, more viable as a option to the voters. We realize that Lorraine County has three-quarters of a percent sales tax to give right now, that that could be added to the state maximum. That would still put us below Cuyahoga County. So we know that this is the preferred means and the most viable option to place on the ballot this fall.
Also, I think it's important for the public to understand how the state woefully funds transit compared to other states. I think the average is, what, 83 cents or 86 cents per person? It's a very low number. And puts us almost dead last when it comes to public funding on the state level, so, you know, a lot of responsibilities there, and I've had many a floor fight trying to get additional funds for transit. I just don't understand why so many in the legislature aren't willing to be supportive of it. So what happens is everything gets pushed down to the local level. The other reality that comes into play is that because, as Ohioans and Ohio taxpayers, you know, you've seen the governor talk about tax breaks, but the reality is that when income taxes were reduced, it greatly benefited wealthy Ohioans, certainly not the middle class or other Ohioans as much. And then to compensate for that, the offsetting factor to kind of make it revenue-neutral, at least they claim, was to raise the sales tax a quarter of a percent. And, you know, it's important to understand that as Commissioners, that's really the only area or option that we have when it comes to being in any kind of financial straits or financial crisis to be able to go that arena. So the governor, in essence, went into our toolbox, he always talks about using a toolbox, went into our toolbox, basically used our tools that we need to support local government so that he can make a tax break available, primarily to benefit wealthy Ohioans. So, you know, that creates a little bit of frustration, you know, for us as well, too. Obviously, this board has tried in the past to pass transit levies. Why do you think now is any different from a year ago or two years ago?
I'd be happy to respond to that. Thank you, Commissioner Lundey. We've never had a coalition like this before. I've lived in Lorraine County since 1983, and I was at the Board of Mental Health for a number of years, ran a private consulting firm, and now I'm with the Community Foundation. And every needs assessment we've ever done has had transportation as one of the highest needs in the county. And we understand it's difficult. We understand that there's a lot of pressure on county government, particularly now, to make your budget balance. And that precisely is why we're asking for a dedicated sales tax, so that it doesn't become one of those items that you have to consider, what do we cut when we have too many things to cut and too many things we need? We need to have that protection for transportation, but it's precisely because of the momentum that we've gotten. I believe it was in February 2006 when you, Commissioner Lundey, kind of sponsored the first public meeting that we had on a cold snowy night up in Lorraine County Community College. We had over 100 people that braved, even when the college was closed, we had over 100 people that braved that night to come out because they said transportation is important. We've done polling research, and when we looked at it, we believe we've got a good chance of passing a sales tax this November if it's dedicated for public transit. We don't think we've had a window like that before. So that's why we're coming with a bit of a sense of urgency, that we really want to get moving on this. We want to empower and get all of these folks out to get the votes so that we can get that dedicated tax that essentially takes transportation off consideration for what don't we fund anymore, but gives us a solid basis for an investment in the future. Transit will lead to economic growth. It isn't just an expense. It will lead to economic growth if we make that investment.
And I know, you know, before I got here, you know, my colleagues have tried in the past, I said, with, you know, transit levies, and the most recent one, I think, would have been, what, $3 a resident? $3 a resident, you know, household, rather, not a resident, a household. And we're unsuccessful with that. And, you know, when you look at the numbers on this proposal, this quarter percent would generate probably about $9 million. And obviously, there's an opportunity to match that with federal funding, you know, which would grow those dollars as well, too. So, you know, I hope you understand that the board has certainly made efforts in the past and have put together packages that at least would help the system, you know, stay solvent and viable, I guess you could say. But are you concerned at all about the $9 million figure? Do you think that's a figure that maybe some may see as being a large figure? I'm just asking the question. I'm not saying that I see it that way, but...
You know, I think the, any tax proposed to voters, it's a value proposition. If you invest in this, what will we get in our community? We know from research that we've done that even voters who never see themselves using public transportation in large numbers say they would support this because they feel it's what is part of the vision of prosperity and growth for our community, as well as taking care of those folks who do not have access to transportation. The dollar figure that you mentioned is actually lower than our neighboring counties, who are also collecting a quarter percent sales tax or more. So when you think about value, you think about a public transportation that is convenient, that is accessible, that can get you to where you need to go, whether you're a commuter going into Cleveland, whether you're an older adult living in a place where there's not access to shopping that you need to get to, whether it's just someone who wants to get to church on Sunday. We have to provide a transit system that is reasonably accessible and convenient, and the past initiatives, although well-intended, would not have even gotten there. So the value was not there, and I don't believe that value proposition was made to the voters. It was seen as an expense. This is an investment in infrastructure that can transform our community.
And your proposal is for five years? Why five years? Why not 10 or...
Well, you know, I think that the thought is, this is new. We need five years, we think, would be the right proposition to folks to see a difference, to be able to see a difference in our community, and then to go back to voters at that point and make our case. If we can't make our case within five years, then we're not doing it right. So that's the level of commitment that we're asking for, because we think it's, with a new tax, voters are gonna want to say, okay, I'm willing to go for that longer period of time, but I've gotta see the difference.
So in that five years, you're expecting to do everything on a cash basis with no borrowing? Because, you know, once, if you borrow, it's gonna be a 20-year commitment, and if the tax is only five years, what do we do for the next 15?
We realize it's gotta ramp up. Obviously, the federal funding won't be available. But quite frankly, the system that we have now is so low that this level of growth is something I think we can sustain and can encourage. So we certainly don't want...
But it'll all be on a cash basis, then? You won't be considering any borrowing in that first five years?
So we're looking to you all, in terms of implementing this, to obviously do the best job you can, but you've gotta make those decisions about whether you're gonna do it on a cash basis or borrowing. But there was no borrowing expected in this. It was meant to ramp up over time rather than overnight. But, you know, I think that's something we'd like to work with you in terms of what that vision looks like, so that as we're taking this initiative to the voters, regardless of where they live in Lorraine County, they see that value that they're getting when they go to the ballot box. That's ultimately what it's about with any tax initiative. It's about what can I afford, but even more importantly, what value am I getting out of it for my community and my neighbors?
Yeah, we wanted to ask some of the clarifying questions, I guess, having been involved in the issue. I know the questions that keep coming up, and when I run into people in the community, these are the types of questions that have surfaced. But, you know, I want to thank both of you for all that you're doing and for making this presentation here today. Obviously, we have some things that we have to think about and talk about, and we'll be in conversation with you more. And I know many here are here to, you know, weigh in and speak. Normally, in our meetings, we have a public hearing towards the end, but what we're gonna do is move that bus up to connect with this one, and so that anyone willing to or interested in speaking this morning on behalf of public transit, did you have a question?
I was waiting. You said you were gonna do the chairman's rules to recognize people in the day for the meeting.
I'll recognize Commissioner Kaloe.
Thank you. Well, you're saying, I said we're gonna have a big crowd, let me just recognize you before you speak. I said, okay, Commissioner, because normally you just talk off the cuff, so...
Sorry, Matt.
Well, as you get, we've had our meetings and discussions together, and I've probably, amongst the board here, I spend the most time on transportation through my years on the WAC and chairing the organization. And actually, I was in Indianapolis a few weeks ago on a conference, national, and a discussion with transit with a lot of organizations. I mean, we're never gonna be the billion two they're putting into Denver to their airport, but it's extremely important in the discussion points. And when we met last week again, I talked about the importance, you can talk about, you know, elderly can't get the healthcare appointments, you can talk about our youth can't get to college. I met the lady who established Tiger Grants for, you know, transportation nationally, and it all becomes about a jobs component. I've made my issues concerned as to what we've got looking forward at the county. And publicly, I've said, I'm concerned about a whole quarter percent sales tax dedicated. Currently, the state of Ohio won't let us do an eighth or anything, a split. Again, the county has major issues. You saw the renovations of the courthouse and the issues before us with the court account and police, a new software, our ongoing needs at our jail. Again, the state, as Commissioner Lundey pointed out, has taken our tool, sales tax, and they've raised it twice in the last decade, where Lorraine County hasn't had a permanent raise since 1995, I believe. Commissioner Blair, I saw you walk in, we passed a jail tax back in the old days?
I can't remember.
And that's not due to her age. But it was a long time ago. So, I mean, Lorraine County has been averse to supporting, because we've been on the ballot with the sales tax issues, and we've got ongoing needs. And I have brought up, and I've spoke to other Commissioners in passing after we've had meetings and stuff, and you also, that maybe some type of equitable split between a general operations, sales tax, and, well, I guess it would have to be an assurance of the board that so much would go towards transit, at $2.5 or $3.25 of collected sales tax under the quarter percent. When we did transit in the past, we had 15 or 16 routes, and I don't know if Pam's in here or not. Pam, what was our maximum routes? What, we had 15 or 16 routes a decade ago when we were funding it?
We had 14 routes.
We had 14 routes, which did a pretty decent job. Again, not the timeline, you want a 30-minute turnaround on all drops. I think in our urban areas, that's a lot easier to achieve. And again, when we did do it, we did a lot more compression at the beginning and the end of the day routes to move more people, again, through the day. And the complaints were throughout the community that, you know, empty buses were running around. I mean, that's always an issue, but you're not going to have full buses during the day. We don't have a vibrant metropolis, downtown Cleveland, moving people within the same five-mile area, so... I'm a big proponent of transit. I've been to your meetings all season, you guys are doing a wonderful job. I mean, kicking it off. I serve on the Chamber Board, Team Lorraine County Board. I hear all of our employers talking about they can't get employees. It's nice that we have Avon Lake on board, Avon Employers on board, North Ridgeville Employers on board. I think if we can come up with some type of a hybrid issue going forward, I might be more comfortable versus a full $9.5 million, because we all know that $9.5 million, by the time we get a federal match, and you're only asking for five years, I have a concern about. I don't think we can gear up enough to show the public we're using that money in five years, just getting back in the funding. I mean, we've lost $15 million at the end of this year, the last three and a half years, not being in the funding stream. Those dollars have gone elsewhere, a lot to our peers in the Lake County and Stark County and Cuyahoga County. I don't know if that's quite enough gear-up time to show a $24 million system, knowing the funding issues we have to go through, so... Yeah, please, Brian.
Happy to, thank you, Commissioner Kaloe. I think we'd have to certainly take it back to our membership. We'd, I think, be willing to entertain the idea of a longer levy, a tenure. We do believe that there is an accountability, we've gotta demonstrate results to it. My understanding, though, one of the factors and the principles have been really something that we hold very dear, so we've already looked at a number of options. We'd be happy to look at options, but we'd have to have guarantees, and my understanding is the only way we can get a dedicated tax would be to have a dedicated property tax or a dedicated sales tax. And what we're concerned about is exactly what has happened in Lorraine County for future Boards of Commissioners. The intent is great with you three, but we get five years down the road and there's an economic hardship, and if we don't have that firm dedication, transit loses. In 2009, we had almost a million dollars of local levies, local dollars going into transit. We've got $142,000 today. So we want to, we need to have that kind of protection, that when the need is the greatest, transit won't go away because it's another line item that has to be balanced. It's, you know, county budget, I wouldn't want to have your job in what you have to, but we need to protect transit. The other piece to it is, we had 14 routes. Our research, we've been working with Ken Sislak from AECOM. You guys know him well. He indicated in all of the planning that he's done preliminarily, we could probably support a 30-minute wait time on 10 routes with $9.7 million, and it would pretty much eat up all that. The federal dollars can't be used for operations, as I understand it, they can only be used for infrastructure and capital?
No, no, it's a 50% match on the operations, 80/20 on the...
And I had understood that that 80/20, and could be wrong, but...
It comes in different variations, but that's a nice little...
Gotcha. And we want to take advantage of as much of that as we possibly can. But right now, we've got four routes with two-hour... support a 30-minute wait time on 10 routes with $9.7 million, and it would pretty much eat up all that. The federal dollars can't be used for operations, as I understand it, they can only be used for infrastructure and capital.
No, no, it's a 50% match on the operations, 80/20 on the...
And I had understood that that 80/20, and could be wrong, but...
It comes in different variations, but that's a nice little...
Gotcha. And we want to take advantage of as much of that as we possibly can. But right now, we've got four routes with two hour wait times, and that can't support people going to work. I mean, we all know that. We need to get to something that has a level of adequacy that people can see, and it makes a real difference in Lorraine County. That's going to generate new businesses, frankly, going to generate new sales tax, it's going to increase the economy. It might take time, but we know from research, any place, you know, I think Dawn and Tony, when we've got businesses looking at Lorraine County, one of the things they want to know is, do you have a vibrant public transit system?
Without a doubt.
And so we see this as an investment that we can do together. You've got a group of allies that are going to work like crazy to get this passed, and also to help with that accountability and explaining to the public why we may have empty buses, and that it's going to be, that's an important piece to it because we've got to get those people on the bus to jobs. We've got businesses growing in Avon like crazy, we've got people in Lorraine that need jobs, and we can't get them together. And that's, we should be doing something about that as a county. So appreciate your help and support and consideration on this.
I'm not sure who to ask this question to, but obviously, Cuyahoga County is exceeding their maximum amount of sales tax. They had to have gotten additional permission to ask for more than the maximum, and I wonder what we would have to do, because we only have that three quarters left. And actually, we need a half right now, just to, you know, for our own personal, and if we need something future for the jail expansion or rebuild of the jail, there goes that three quarters is gone. So if we give you a quarter, we could be in a world of hurting, you know, in the future.
Right. And Commissioner Kokoski, it's not only Cuyahoga County, but Hamilton and Franklin, I know, are both collecting above the state. And my guess is, Commissioner Lundey, from your experience of legislation, simply a legislative piece.
I mean, do we have time to be able to get that legislation?
No, they won't be back till after November election. Their 100 days are in.
So if we gave, there's no way to expand that?
I believe there are only, what, four counties that are as low as we are in Ohio?
They have taken the largest counties, giving them special dispensation.
The current climate, the sad part is that, you know, even if you say, why don't you give us the opportunity to at least go to the voters and ask those questions, there are too many legislators down there who still feel, mostly Tea Party members, who feel that they're voting for a tax increase just by allowing you to ask for more taxes in the future, even though it's coming down to the voters saying yes or no, I want to do it. And that's, you know, because we've talked about needing to raise the ceiling on some other, whether it be tax, whatever it may be. And I was immediately told, when I had that conversation with Senator Manning, she said, now, Matt, you've been down here, you know, a lot of folks feel that that's raising taxes. I said, not raising taxes, you're just giving people the opportunity to take the question to the voters, and if the voters want to approve it, they approve it. If not, they don't. But you're not raising taxes by simply raising the ceiling.
Right.
And I want to, just on a couple of their counties you compared, because I work with like Lake County and Stark County through the Commission Association, they also do a little bit different in their taxing structure. They've got the Health and Human Services levies and stuff. They take burdens off the general fund where we pay right to our job and family services. You're familiar with that bill, where we pay into that, comes out of general fund expenditures, where they actually have property taxes that pay for a lot of those issues. Again, it's the structure of government and what the voters have allowed over the last 30 or 40 years, so. But we do a lot of general fund expenditures, we don't have that property tax that replaces that, to leave other dollars to meet some of the other needs that are demanded, and then we don't have the higher ceiling on the sales tax. I mean, you guys made a great presentation, you've worked your tails off. I agree with everything you've said in regards to the need. And like I said, as an employer in the county myself also, not only as a commissioner, but also private sector, I understand the need to get employees to work. Again, the dollar issue becomes a concern on the ability to continue to finance county government on needs that we are being very...
Mandates, not just needs, but mandates.
Oh, without a doubt, yeah, they become mandated.
Commissioner Kokoski, if I could just phrase what you said a little bit differently when you said we've only got three quarters of a percent left. I look at it as, isn't it great that we've got three quarters of a percent that we can go to the voters of Lorraine County to say, do you want to invest in the company? And we're only asking for a quarter of that, which still leaves a half a percent. But we've got a resource available that the citizens of Lorraine County can vote on to say, what do we want to do? If we were at, if we were at the ceiling right now, the only option we would have would be to go to the state and ask for a higher ceiling. But we've got the availability, we've got the opportunity, we just want to take advantage and see if the voters of Lorraine County in November agree that this is a priority. If they say it isn't, move on. We're going to, Move's going to continue to work on this, and we'll figure out transportation options because we've got to get people around. But we just want to have a chance in November. So, thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, as we said, we're going to open up a public comment at this time, so for anyone who would wish to speak, certainly feel free to come up to probably this podium over to my right.
Name and address.
And if you'll start each time with your name and address, I think we know this young lady.
Commissioners Lundey, Kelo, Kokoski, and retired Commissioner Betty Blair. I represent one group that you always worry about in any levy passing.
We got to stop you. Still for the microphone, you've got to introduce yourself and your address.
Name and address.
Name and addresses, we'll start with that, sorry.
I'm an old person, I did, thought I did that. Mauryta Ferguson, 5407 Waterford Circle. It's a new address for me, so Sheffield Village, and I love it.
It's a great place to live.
What I wanted to say is, I represent a group that is always a concern. I've been around this world a long time, and it appears in the paper every time, and we talk about it. And it's that I happen to be an old person, I happen to represent three of those. I'm an old person on a fixed income, and I live in an apartment. And those are the people that always you wonder, will they have enough left over? Well, I just want to assure you, and with Annie Glenn's method of speaking, she said, be brief and speak of what you know. So this is as brief as I can be. I am that old person that you worry about, and I will vote for this levy, and I will do my best to get it passed. May not have much years left in me, but you got to. Thank you.
Thanks, Peg.
Okay, others willing to speak this morning? Okay. We'll have Victor, and then we'll come to you, John, if that's okay. It's okay, Victor. Start with your name and address, please, Victor.
Victor Leandry, 936 Highland Park, Lorraine, Ohio. I'm here representing our Centro, and also part of the, I'm part of the Move Board. First of all, Brian and Bill, well-known presentation, but I need to stand up and talk about the population that I serve. Transportation is one of the biggest issue. For 12 years that I've been in our Centro, every single day, I see how it affects our clients. And unfortunately for us, we're one of those foundations, one of those organizations that have invested in transportation, in cars, just for, to move our client, our staff to appointments and to different organizations where they do transport interpretation and everything else. But those cars I use every single day transporting clients. I have my manager operation here, and I have some of the board members. We spend hundreds of dollars every week just to keep those cars running and to transport clients, hundreds, money that is not there for us as a nonprofit. Thankfully, to the foundations that are here that support our programs, we use some of that money from the programs to transport clients. But we see the need in a way that is unbelievable. It's like people that had to move one or two miles to get to doctor's appointments, that they cannot make it. And when they call complaining about the services that we have, they don't complain about the quality of services, they're complaining that we cannot transport them, that they complain that they do have our Centro. As when we have our four cars transporting, I'd say hundreds of people every month, you know? So when people call complaining about our Centro, what they're complaining is not about Centro, it's about that we don't have the capability to transport everybody that's calling our Centro, asking for transportation. I really encourage you guys to think about this and look for ways, create a way that we can work together, because it is, it is a big, it's a big issue here in Lorraine. When I have the, and I will finish with this, but when Brian invited me to this committee, I say no. My first, my first, my first response was no, because for 12 years I've been dealing with this, and for 12 years I've been seeing the issue getting worse and worse and worse. And I was like, I don't have the time for that. When I look at that, when I did my homework and look at this board, and look at the organizations that are involved, and look at the plan that they have, I knew I needed to be part of this. Because if there is, there's a moment to do, to make this happen in Lorraine, it is now. And I know part of, this board is very committed, and I have the support of my board and my staff, and I'm 100% committed to this, to this issue right now, and to be part of this board and work as hard as I can to make this happen. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Victor. Hey, John, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner Lundey and all commissioners. Thank you for letting me speak, and thank you for hosting us.
If you could just give us your address, John, please.
Yes, my name is John Pursut. I live at 200 Kendall Drive, Oberlin, Ohio. I'm also a resident of Kendall at Oberlin. Kendall at Oberlin performs routine satisfaction surveys amongst the residents to see how it's doing. Every time, transportation comes out as a number-one concern, and so we have a very strong stake in the successful outcome of what we're endeavoring to do here. I'd like to make a couple of points that I think amplify and show why we are calling for a quarter percent sales tax. Back in 2004, well, actually, in 2003, we had 642,532 fixed route riders. The next year, 2004, we had 746,625, or a 16% increase. In 2005, we're up another 6.9%, I'm sorry, 6.7% to 796,475. We had at that time what I would call critical mass, and that's what I think we will be able to accomplish again by going with a quarter percent sales tax. In the meantime, let's look at some later numbers. What we're finding in 2010, 2011, 2012 is year-on-year declines in ridership. In 2010, we were 98,900. 2011, 79,225. 2012, 67,193. What that's showing is we no longer have a critical mass. And between the fare increases that we're forced to implement and the small amount of service we have, the ridership is disappearing. Now, we still have areas in the county that have more than 20% without access to a car. So we don't know where these people are going, but it looks like maybe they're staying at home. And so that puts us into a very difficult position. We may be talking about public transit versus public assistance. Let's hope we're not, but I'm afraid that might be one of the things that we're looking at. And so, again, I appreciate your interest in hosting us, and I hope you'll put this on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you, John, you made a good point. It's something I've said quite often, you either pay for public assistance or you pay for public transit, if you really want to get people back to work. Councilman, good morning.
Good morning, good morning. My name's Andrew Arroyo, 1853 East 30th Street. And to me and the residents that I, that I serve, this is a service that we need. I have a wide variety of residents, from retired to unemployed to some are just laid off from the steel mill. And the problem, a lot of the residents or complaints that I get is, there's no jobs. And then the jobs that they do have, they can't get a ride too. So this right here, I think, is a service that strongly is going to help not just my ward, but a lot of different wards in the city of Lorraine, for people to get, to get jobs. And so this is something that I strongly support, hope you support, and will strongly help the residents of my city. Thank you.
Morning, Pastor Cunningham. Good to see you again.
It's good to be here. My name is Marsetus Cunningham. I live at 713 Bowling Green Circle in the city of Illyria. I've been a pastor in this community for nearly 22 years, and it seems like every so often, this issue of transportation is moved to the forefront of our, of our county issues. I serve a diverse congregation, age-wise, and as I age, I see the need for access to a number of services that are in this community. It really boils down, I think, more so than just simply a fiscal issue, it really boils down to a moral issue. If we want to include all of our populace in getting access to those things that's going to help them and aid them, then we have to consider making the sacrifice, and I'm willing to make the sacrifice, and I'm willing to push my congregation and those who are part of my circle of contacts in relationship to the sacrifice that we make on behalf of future generations and individuals who are coming along behind us. I know that we're living in some very tough economic times, particularly when it comes to funding things that the government and that agencies and the commissioners and so forth have to deal with on a regular basis. And being a pastor who lives from week to week on the contributions of people, I try to approach the financial issue from the perspective of opportunity, partnership, and the opportunity to invest in the future. And so I would hope that that would be a consideration going forward, that we're not just looking at how it's going to benefit us personally presently, but the long-term implications and ramifications that it could bring positively to individuals getting access to a whole array of things in Cuyahoga County and Summit County and areas like that, that right now they just can't get to because they don't have the transportation, the opportunity to do so. So I would hope that my support would encourage the support of others to make this a very practical issue and one of morality and ethics as we move ahead, to hopefully get this thing on the ballot. And I want to also thank this committee who has done a tremendous and incredible job pulling together the options that we have in this county to get this particular thing done. I want to commend them for the yeoman's job and yo' woman's job that they have done in relationship to it. God bless.
Thank you, Pastor. Others willing to participate at this time? I mean, there's obviously opportunities in the future, but we just thought we'd try to have the public comment this morning since you're here, because I know you all want to stick around for our exciting agenda.
I'm Reverend Mary Carson. I live at 14523 Lake Avenue in Lakewood. However, for the last six and a half years, I've been serving as pastor of the Episcopal Church of the Redeemer in downtown Lorraine. In that time, I've been exposed to the tremendous need, I don't need to echo the moral argument, although I will say, well done, to my clergy colleague. What I want to do is simply give you a brief factual piece. Four of the churches in downtown Lorraine over the last few years have been combining our efforts to help our neighbors in emergency ways, doing so along with El Centro, Catholic Charities, the others. Our four relatively small churches, last year gave out over $5,000 worth of bus tickets. That was money coming out of primarily the pockets of parishioners. We probably spent another couple of thousand dollars providing vouchers for gas for the people who couldn't get places on the bus. I think that this issue is a deeply moral issue, and it's simply looking at how funds are expended. They'll be expended in one way or another. Is this the most efficient way for us to use the resources that we have? So I strongly encourage you to support this effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Others willing to speak or interested in speaking this morning? Good morning.
Martin Libas, 2047 East 30th Street. I'm here representing Goodwill of Lorraine County. Just to piggyback on what Mr. Leandry said earlier about jobs out there, I deal daily with that, being that that is my primary occupation with Goodwill. I find people jobs through the community, whether it be in Cuyahoga County, Lorraine County, Medina County. I just want to say, there are people out there that want to work, they're capable of working, they're eligible to find jobs in other places because of their backgrounds, but the transportation issue is killing us in Goodwill. But the transportation issue is killing us in Goodwill. We don't have the means to buy cars like Victor does there. We transport by our own vehicles, which puts wear and tear on our own cars. You know, again, this is vital to Lorraine County. You know, I see it every day in the Goodwill industries that we work in. Victor deals with everything. I think everybody here deals with transportation issues that are racking our brains. We've been trying to go through this for years and years. I used to bring people here to pick up their bus tickets, you know, what have you, or down the street, pick up bus tickets. But let's make this thing move forward and, you know, hopefully that we can all do this as bridges to one another. Thank you.
Good morning.
I'm Kathy Boylan. I'm Health Commissioner for the city of Illyria. And I speak for all of the public health community. We do a lot of outreach to people and we do focus groups. How can we help more? People need to be on their own. We asked a question at a focus group recently that said, what is the most important thing we can do for you? Because we want a job. And we heard about a job, someplace that I can't get to. If we just could have the bus systems that would allow these people to get jobs that are available in Lorraine County and in Cuyahoga County. It's just a shame to know that I could be doing it, but I can't. There's no way to get there. And that's something we have to, we want independent people. These are all people who love Lorraine County. They choose to live here, but they need to be able to pay their way. And this is the way that we can help them with that. So, I urge you to put that on the ballot. Those of us who are comfortable enough with our own skin, our own cars, that we drive by and say, well, what does anybody need a bus for? As someone pointed out, I think the Reverend, this is our responsibility. We're in this together. And I don't want to quote somebody, but it does take a village to put a good community on the map. And so, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you Catherine. John? While we're waiting for our next resident to come up, I just want to, I see so many familiar faces in the room and this board recognizes, you know, the great work that so many of you do to help citizens in this county. And we just can't thank you enough for what you do day in and day out. You have a lot of things that you're very passionate about and that you speak out about. This is one, I'm sure, that's on a very long list of things that you do day in and day out. So, thanks for your dedication to helping people in our community. Well, good morning.
Morning. I'm Philip Copeland. I live at 110 Indiana Avenue in Illyria. Been there for 43 years, in the city for 46 years. Like the other gentleman that spoke, I've been to these meetings before. Years ago, I remember standing up here. I'd like to definitely support the idea of having a sales tax on the ballot in November. As a blind person, of course, I'm transit dependent. I've got a good wife that drives me a lot of places. But I use the dialeride when she's not able to. And I want to say, they've done a fantastic job. They always do very well by me. Sometimes they have to turn me down because they don't have the capacity. So, it's important. I've also had the experience of being in cities such as California and recently in Boston, where I see what can be done. Now, those, we're not Boston, we're not California here. They have resources we don't have, but they have states that support their transit. But they have fantastic paratransit systems. And California, it must have at least three or four options for transportation. So, I think we could at least have a reasonably good system here in Lorraine County. And I would hope that paratransit would also be included if there's funding. Thank you very much.
Thank you Mr. Copeland.
I second that.
Second by Mrs. Copeland. Others interested in speaking this morning on this issue? Okay. Well, as we said, we appreciate all that you do in the community to help the residents of the community. It's a very important issue. This is an issue that we take very seriously. And you probably won't be here towards the end of the meeting when I give my commissioners' report, but, you know, we're on the verge Friday of getting word back. We're very optimistic that this county is going to be receiving a $100,000 planning grant. That was made possible through the full support of this board to move forward, to make a request, to also make an investment so that we could put some dollars on the table into a planning grant for transit. We're hoping to hear about that Friday. We're optimistic that's going to happen. Check your local newspapers on Saturday. Hopefully, you'll see the story about it. But as I said, you know, I know before I got to this board, you know, my colleagues have gone to bat several times on this issue. And all three of us take this issue very seriously. I think we just need some time to digest and think some things through and work with you to try to figure out which pathway will be the best pathway to use. So, I want to thank you for being here this morning. We are going to go into the board agenda, so at this time, you're more than welcome to stay. Or...
They can't move fast enough.
Can't move fast enough to hit the exits, huh? It's like a fire drill.
Oh, we'll give them five minutes to clear out.
Investment.
I'll make the motion to move.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Appropriations.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski. Aye.
Transfers.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Travel.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski. Aye.
Bills.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Under adult probation, approve grant in the amount of $218,945 with the Ohio Department of Rehabilitation and Correction, Division of Parole and Community Services, Bureau of Community Sanctions, 408 non-residential misdemeanor.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Approve a grant in the amount of $910,387 with the Ohio Department of Rehabilitation and Correction, Division of Parole and Community Services, Bureau of Community Sanctions, 407 non-residential felony.
So move.
Second.
Discussion.
Just a quick question, is this the same amount that we got last year Beth? This is for PSI, right?
Yes. There was an increase to the 408 program this past year, but these are the same amounts for the 407.
Okay.
So, there's been some changes in the way monies are allocated, you know, to certain line items, but it's the same amount for the grant.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for sending the attached supporting documentation.
Absolutely.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Under the Commissioners, authorize various personal actions as indicated on the form receipt from employees within jurisdiction learning county commissioners.
That would be Administrator Cordez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have a significant amount of personnel issues in the hirings this morning, a job in family services and community development. Also, I gave you some handouts earlier in the week with regard to the negotiations. At children's services, we need to discuss. In addition to, I want to brief you on the mediation we had with United Steelworkers America representing the employees in the administrative building, which is the lead contract on several elected officials' contracts here. So, I know that Commissioner Kayla has to leave as soon as possible and try to be brief.
I got a 1:30 conference call with CCA.
Okay, so we'll try to get through all that and update on purchase of real estate. All of those topics are allowable under the Sunshine Act for executive session discussion. So, I'd ask at the conclusion of our regular board meeting today, we go into executive session and we talk about those items. Thank you.
Thank you for being here today. We know you're under the weather. You know, those old Navy guys, they don't give up, so.
You go to work and if you're lucky, they may send you home five minutes early. Thank you.
Okay.
Approve waive the reading of the same county commissioners' meeting minutes of June 1st and 7th.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey.
Here. Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Under community development, a work contract to Buckeye Excavating and Construction, Inc., Norwalk, in the amount of $210,467, which includes contingency for the Grove Land Street Improvement Project. Five bids were received on May 19th, this being the most responsive complying with specifications. $100,000 will be paid from CDBG PY-15 account. Contract services and city will pay the remaining $110,467. Issue notice to proceed effective on or before June 13th. Complete said contract honor before December 1st. And authorized county minister notify the order to release retention of completion of contract.
So move.
Second.
Yeah, we do have something.
Yeah.
The, Don, this was the bid we had the problem with the timestamp on, right? The, I really want to, you know, journalize this just in case there's inquiry later.
I did get an inquiry on it actually.
Okay.
But I talked to the person and they understood. But if you want to journalize it.
Well, just in case.
Yep.
The package that came in, when they came in the date, timestamp, it was too big for the timestamp. And the package was here on time for this successful bid. But they had to take it to a different timestamp to stamp the package.
And it was what, been a minute late?
And it, yeah, obviously, it came, the timestamp stamped it as being a minute late, but it wasn't. It was actually received. We've documented that we received it on time and that's with the official file, just in case sometime in the future, there's an inquiry. It's really hard when people get in there 30 seconds before the bell and we're trying to get these things stamped for them so everybody has a competitive, you know, compete for our business. So, I just want to make sure that we don't have any litigation on this in the future, which could hold this up. It was all above board. And then they tallied the bids afterwards, they opened them in the public hearing room and went through the whole process. But thank you for taking that call. I knew there was an inquiry and I had answered it myself before that, indicating that we felt there was no timeliness issues on the bids.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Under workforce development, amendment resolution 15467 adopted July 22nd, 2015, approving an attorney data sharing confidential agreement with ODJFS. Amendment is to reflect the extension to June 30th, 2017.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Amendment resolution 15468 adopted July 22nd, 2015, approving an attorney to Ohio Department of Job and Family Services, Wheel Subgrant Agreement for 1516 State Fiscal Biennium. Amendment is to reflect the extension to June 30th, 2017 and incorporate general language pertinent to the Comprehensive Case Management Employment Program.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski. Aye.
Approve an attorney purchase service contract with workforce institute Lorraine County to service Ohio Means Job Center operator effective July 1st, 2016 through June 30th, 2017 at a cost of $781,448.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski. Aye.
Approve the bylaws, Lorraine County Workforce Development Board is required under the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Under the engineer work contract to suburban maintenance and construction of Royalton in the amount of $312,676 for the Oberlin area road, East 34th Street Bridge improvements, to be paid from the MVGT engineer project account. Three bids were received, this being the most responsive complying with specifications. Issue notice to proceed on or before June 27th and complete on or before November 4th. Authorized minister notify the order to release retention of completion of project.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski. Aye.
Amendment resolution 1641 adopted January 20th, 2016, approving an attorney contract, GSI, Inc., in the amount, to assist with required testing and inspection of new subdivision of Columbia Township. Amendment is to reflect an increase of $15,000 for a total contract amount of $35,434 to be paid from the engineer project account.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski. Aye.
Approve modification number one to KS Associates, Inc., in the amount of $184,564.77 for plan revisions for Cooper Foster Park Road improvements in the city of Anheuser-Lorraine and will be prepared for the engineer account.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski. Receive and generalize county's engineer annual report on the condition of ditches under county maintenance one for the year 2016. Authorize order to continue maintenance fees rates as recommended by the engineer to clean and maintain various county ditches for the year 2017, tax lien 2016.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Cordez.
Madam Clerk, do you have a copy of the bylaws that were submitted for the resolution, would you?
For workforce?
Yes.
Send this whole folder your way.
Sorry to say anything when you were doing the resolution, but I did have a question on something here. I know where it is.
Will stand at ease.
If you're not sure Jim, we can always amend it next week also. Is there a timeline on approving the bylaws?
There is one I just yielded, I'll look at it while you make your reports. There was something, I believe that what they had, and I don't know if it got changed, and I'm sorry I'm a little late on this, was they had in the bylaws, if you missed two meetings, then you had to make two meetings and then you can vote on the next, vote at the next meeting. Couldn't vote. So, that would really take you out of the queue for a long time. When we initially did the bylaws about 10 years ago, we were having a real problem at attendance at these meetings. So, we were trying to put some oomph, because a lot of times, the mandatory partners weren't showing up. But that's not the case anymore. And I'm really concerned that that's going to take somebody right out of the loop on the WEOLA board. And we really got a very engaged group of members right now. So, I'm just going to look at that while you go through. Sure. Thank you.
Mr. Riss.
I have no report today, but I see former Commissioner Blair there. And I think she wants to stay and come into our executive session. She probably misses hearing Mr. Cordez go on.
Did you bring your grapes?
Oh, yes. Commissioners' report.
Commissioner Kayla and I attended our Team Lorraine County Board meeting yesterday morning. And then the three of us all attended our Guthrie ditch hearing with no issues or concerns or complaints. So, that should be moving forward. I thought this was kind of cool, the city of Lorraine is going to be conducting the Lorraine Duck Derby. It's going to be Sunday, June 26th at 3:00. And it says, your generous support of Lorraine International Association and the Boys and Girls Club of Lorraine County. And so, what you do is, one duck is $5, six ducks, $25, 12 ducks for $50. So, they're going to have a race like Kentucky Derby, but with ducks. So, you can go to loraineduckderby.com to find out more information and/or buy your ducks there.
And those are rubber ducks, not real ducks, okay.
Rubber ducks.
Just want to make sure people aren't thinking they're buying real ducks. I'm thinking, wow.
Dump them in the Black River, let's hope they retrieve them.
Yeah, yeah, right. I thought that was kind of cute. I don't know if they've done this before, but it's the first time I've ever seen it, so I thought it just...
You've never seen one of those?
I've seen it, but I don't know if Lorraine's ever done it.
Yeah, right, yeah. I didn't think so.
It's a fundraiser for Lorraine International Association.
Yeah, it's great.
Right.
It's a fundraiser for...
Yeah, it's great.
Right.
A lot of fun.
Yeah. Looks like a lot of fun. Okay. End of my report.
Again, Commissioner Kocowski said we did Team Lorain County Board meeting yesterday, you know, pertinent issues there, the ditch hearing, and then all... This morning, I had my United Way Emergency Food and Shelter Board Committee I served on. We'll go into distribution for committees next week, and then recommendations the week after. Actually, everybody from my committee I was with this morning were here, so they showed up at United Way after I...
That's good.
So, end of my report.
I was pleased to see the story in the paper this morning of the proposed old courthouse renovations. There's a story in the Chronicle this morning.
Journal, too.
Well, I didn't get to the Journal, I guess. Got to one of the two papers. I get three papers a day, so eventually get around to them. But my only concern was the picture that was in the paper was actually the back of the building and...
That's what they wanted.
Then indicate it was the back of the building, and I want people thinking that was the front of the courthouse. That's actually the back of the courthouse. But we're working through to preserve this important part of our history and also make it functional for government use. You know, that's the only way that we can really justify investing government dollars to make it happen, and taxpayer dollars has to have a viable government use, which it will. We'll also be able to preserve it at the same time. But just want to commend the administrator and the leadership team for all the work that's being done on that. Also, had the opportunity to attend the Elyria Joint Quality Meeting with the county administrator and our Director of 911, and very good discussion, always looking for ways that we can work together with our safety forces and with our hospitals to improve responses and quality of care for our residents. Thought it was a very productive meeting. Also, would like to congratulate Kimberly Clipper on her 50th birthday. She's the warden at our Lorain Correctional Facility and very involved in the community and in the church community. So congratulations to her. Had a chance to attend the birthday party on Saturday. I know you're not supposed to mention how old a woman is, but it was a 50th birthday party. So what can I say?
Just half the age.
But she doesn't look 50. She looks half that age, you know, so... But... So that was enjoyable. Also, had a chance to meet with our lakefront Lorain County group. We're having some really great discussion. We're also eagerly awaiting the Nowacko announcement on Friday, hoping that a planning grant will be coming forward for that. And as I said earlier in this meeting, waiting for word on a transit planning grant as well. So it could be a two-for-day for us, hopefully on Friday. Really looking forward to that. Also, you know, these are historic times. It was certainly great to see the first woman to be a presidential nominee of a party, certainly making a lot of progress in this country. Certainly still a glass ceiling out there that each day we have to work together on to break through, but certainly a very historic day for this country. Kiwanis this evening, Strawberry Festival. It's probably the one day of the year that I can honestly admit that I don't have dinner, that I just go to the Strawberry Festival, and after I leave there with what they serve up, I have no room for dinner, snacks, or anything for the rest of the day. But it's always a great event. I think it's a $7 ticket over at St. John Lutheran. And then this weekend, I'll be attending an Eagle Scout Award for Benjamin McComas over at the Avon Lake Firehouse. If you've ever had a chance to attend any of these Eagle Scout presentations, these individuals just work so hard. And if you look at the history of Eagle Scouts who've gone on to do other things for our country, the list of leaders is just amazing of people who used to be Eagle Scouts. So congratulations to Benjamin in advance on that. And that completes my report.
I do have a... My concern was correct. I looked at this some time back, but what it reads now says, "Members missing two consecutive meetings will lose all voting rights until they have attended two consecutive meetings. Thereafter, the third meeting, full voting rights will be restored." You know, when the board's up and running and functioning properly, usually it's only about four meetings a year. Right now, there's a few extra ones because we're in the transition with the new WEOLA Act and the, you know, the comprehensive case management. So there's going to be a few more this year, but theoretically, under this section, if you're out...
You're out for a year.
Yeah. So... And the paragraph before that, it says, "Any member missing three meetings within a year will be automatically forwarded to the board or designated for consideration for removal." What I like to do is remove the paragraph on the missing two, then two, and in that first paragraph, add, "Any member missing two consecutive meetings or three in a year be forwarded for consideration for potential removal." The... I just... I think that may be enough right now. It's really... Sometimes it's really tough on people to get to those meetings. And if that becomes a problem again, then I will work with the WEOLA Board to look at the bylaws and maybe add a little bit more emphasis if that works for you.
Okay. So, just so I understand, is that amendment that we can make, or it's a recommendation we're making that to make that change?
Well, I'm going to... Well, you can... I suggest you pass a resolution, adopt it that way.
Okay.
And I'll send it back down to...
Okay.
The whip chair and the WDA director for a change at the whip. They'll vote on it. I don't see that they're going to have a problem with it.
Right.
Okay.
So that's my suggestion.
That's a good one.
Do you pass that back down here, though? Thank you.
She wants her files back.
Wrote all over it.
Oh, you wrote all over it.
Yeah, I would make the motion to adopt that amendment.
Second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
The... Since I didn't have any comments, I want to say hello to Betty Blair, worked for a couple decades. It's nice to see you here, Betty. It's always a pleasure. We haven't done lunch in a while, so we're due.
Your tab, of course.
Of course. Of course. I know, you're retired and on a fixed income. I understand. You only worked in government for 50 years, so...
Wherever it is, he's the VP.
Oh, the VP nominee.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah. We're saying up here, Betty, that word is that you're going to be getting a call from the Hillary Clinton team to be on the ticket there, so...
The...
You don't think so?[1453.15]